Call the February Study Session to order. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bear?
President.
Commissioner Walz?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Present.
Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Tompkins? Commissioner Mahoney?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Chatwell?
Seven present.
Arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Each individual will state their name and have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time. Opportunity for public comment. Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, move on to item four, approval of the January 7th Study Session. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Word.
We have a motion and support. Any questions? Comments or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Item five, 2019 Annual Evaluation at 2020 Budget, LifeWays Millage Presentation.
Just give me a minute to pull up the presentation if you will.
Sure.
Can you get it for me then? Thank you. So what I would like to do today is to present on the millage for 2019, kind of an evaluation of the use of the dollars for 19 and the services that we were able to provide, and then our budget for 2020 and what our intended use for those dollars will be. And feel free, as I'm moving along, to ask questions. So just a reminder, when we looked at it about a year ago, I presented the planned usage for the budget for fiscal year 19. It did include the local match obligation, jail services, looking at enrichment services for the intellectually developmentally disabled population, also looking at mental health services to support the schools, the Jackson County Guardianship Services, as well as services, obviously, for those who are uninsured or underinsured who are showing up at LifeWays. And that is the budget there for a total budget of 2.1 million, and that was the estimate for the revenue that would be generated from the millage in 19. First thing is to look at the number of individuals that were served relative to being uninsured or underinsured. As you can imagine, when you look at this graph, when we started the implementation, we had to get the word out relative to letting people know about the fact that they could receive services at LifeWays, and so you do see over the course of the year an increase. A total of individuals that were served were 302, individuals who did not have insurance, who came to LifeWays or did have insurance but did not have a mental health benefit. The next slide looks at the types of services, the services total that were provided. So of those 302 individuals that showed up, how many services on a monthly basis were we able to provide? And for a total of 1,670 services were provided during the course of the year for individuals showing up. And the types of services range everywhere from psychiatric services to case management services, therapy, screening, crisis services, peer support, crisis residential, community living room. You can see that a wide variety of services were provided for individuals that came to LifeWays who were not insured.
Mary Beth?
Yes, you sure can.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, let me go back and move back a slide then.
Yeah, probably two slides. So on the 2019 planned usage under mental health services for uninsured and underinsured, that you were just talking about on the next slide?
Yes.
So 35 people essentially?
No, 302 people were served.
302 people?
Yes.
So about $1,700 each is how much was spent on them then ballpark?
No, I didn't utilize all the, we haven't gotten to what the actual expenditures were. I'm sorry. So this is just showing you what we budgeted, now I'm telling you what we actually did, how many people we were able to serve. But you'll see a graph that'll actually break out what was actually spent per item.
Very good.
Okay?
Good morning.
Yes, good morning.
Just curious how those numbers for the underinsured and uninsured compared to 2018? How many were served for uninsured?
Zero.
Thank you.
Yes. Because we didn't have the funds, yes. Okay, so let's move on, I'm sorry. Little problem with the mouse here. There we go. So again, I just talked about the services that were provided. The next item relative to what was budgeted for was really to look at, and I talked about this when we were pursuing the millage, about the fact that individuals who have intellectual developmental disabilities, that once they, what's termed aging, out of the intermediate school district, do not have the ability like the mentally ill population to have social enrichment opportunities paid for out of Medicaid. And one of the things that I clearly heard since becoming CEO is the struggles that parents have with children that then age out that basically, and I shared it when we pursued the millage, that spend their time at home. It was just alarming, and the need for us to really look at being able to provide supports for that population. We did issue an RFQ, a proposal back in January. It did take some time to secure provider. We selected Club Life, and if you're at all interested, they have a website and they also have a Facebook page, and they are doing absolutely phenomenal things in the community in getting individuals with intellectual developmental disabilities out and engaged with their peers and attending things like any of the rest of us would. And here's just a list of some of the things that they've been able to do. They serve about 90 individuals, and they've been able to provide over 1,200 services since they began in about June of this year. The other thing that we've been able to do is provide supports to the jails. We initially started off with providing one full-time mental health clinician in the jail who covered both jails, and the demand was so great that mid-year we did add an additional full-time clinician. We've been able to serve 427 individuals this past year in the jail in providing over close to 1,200 services, mental health supports, and anything from crisis resolution to therapy to help those individuals. Yes?
Mary Beth, when police officers have a person they run into on a call around the street, and they take them, for instance, to allegiance for an evaluation, perhaps a mental evaluation, is that something that is done at LifeWays during the day also? Officers could take a person there, knock them off?
They could bring, yes, they could bring the person there during the day at this point in time, yes.
Is there any reason that could not happen at the jail instead?
I mean, I think we could potentially, in my slide, I'm going to be talking about plans for this next year for the use of the millage and really focusing on some crisis supports that are needed in the community, and that could be run in partnership with law enforcement.
So one of the problems, just to state it, that we have, or officers have, is that word gets out on the street that you can manipulate the system and be, instead of taking to jail for whatever reason, you get taken to HFA for an evaluation. Many times you end up getting cleared by the physician there and then up going to jail, and it ties up an officer for sometimes an hour or longer. And it just made sense to me to have that done at the jail if possible. So I thought I'd ask.
Yeah, and if you don't mind, I would like to come back to that question that you've raised right there when I get to the crisis services that are going to be a focus of this next year. The other thing that we did this past year is really provide supports to the schools around mental health services. It did take some time. There were a couple of programs, Club Life being one of them, this being another one that did not begin January 1st, so we did not expend the amount of revenue that we thought we would initially because it took some time to get it up and going. But we do have two community engagement specialists, one at Springport, one at Forest Street Learning Center, in partnership with the ISD for the schools that they identified at most risk relative to mental health needs with students. And it is an ability for us to coordinate care and do screenings and connecting them with mental health services quickly. The other thing that we've been able to do is to provide, which is a critical thing, is, you know, around education and prevention. And this past year, we've provided youth mental health first aid trainings and Safe Talk, which is a suicide training. And you can see there the number of trainings we provided and the number of people that have been trained. The other thing that has been provided for a community around supports to schools and mental health needs is around trauma services. So these are therapy services that are provided for individuals that have been identified, students that have experienced trauma, and a list of the schools as well as the number of students and how many sessions have been provided this past year.
Just a quick question, how you identified those particular districts?
It was in a partnership with the intermediate school district to identify the schools that they felt were most at risk relative to needing mental health supports in the schools.
Okay.
They were at the table. I mean, we couldn't make that decision as the community mental health, ISD would.
I guess my question is, does every district have the opportunity, where they approached by the ISD, to talk about students that might have potential needs?
Now that, I couldn't answer that question, whether or not they approached the other schools. I know that we've met with ISD and those were the ones that they identified, so I mean, if there's a recommendation to pursue that, I would absolutely be open to doing that with the ISD, talking about other schools.
I would like to see East Jackson and Michigan Center at least have the opportunity. And Vander Cook Lake.
Thank you, I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Excuse, I'm sorry. I hate to jump in there, but is there any way we can include any of the Jackson Public Schools as well?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. Springport is, but, okay. All right, let me move on to the next slide, and I will take that back to the planning. This actually looks at this past fiscal year, so it looks at our initial budget relative to where we planned on utilizing the millaged dollars and where we ended up. One of the things to note is we are not yet closed out of the fiscal year. We do, there are still claims and billing that is coming in, there's still the 90-day window, so this actually won't, the numbers won't be finalized because year-end is obviously December 31st, so some of the numbers will fluctuate a little bit, but I would say that a good majority of the claims are in. But you can look at what was spent relative to jail services for the enrichment center. I did note on this slide, if you will, because it does have an impact, was that some of these did not begin until July or fall, so I did not have a full years of expenditure. But one of the things that I also want you to note there on the end is that there will be 584,476 that will be a carryover, and that is to address the crisis services that I talked about and I'm going to talk about in a little bit further for our community So one of the things that we look on an annual basis, and when we pursued the millage, we committed to the county that we would work in partnership to really look at what is really truly needed in the community around mental health and where are the gaps. And one of the things that we're noting, and you kind of pointed to that, Commissioner Elwell, is around the challenges around inpatient, and that there's not a lot of opportunities for diversions for people. After hours and on weekends, the only place that individuals can go is the emergency room. When we look at the utilization of the number of screenings that we do, we do on average about 240 to 250 screenings a month of individuals in the ER, and we are only placing about, you can see the numbers here, about 114 if you look at December, a little over 44%, 48% of individuals actually get placed. So there is an opportunity to divert those people from ever even going to the ER in the first place. They don't need that level of care. Having challenges as a statewide system around the fact that people are being boarded, and I believe I've talked to you Commissioners about that in the past, that people at times are sitting in our emergency room for up to two weeks as they are waiting for a bed somewhere in the state of Michigan. And the challenge with that is that the state has seen a reduction in inpatient psychiatric beds since about 2013. The number of beds have decreased significantly. For just for an example, children, there used to be 729 beds, and now there's about 279 beds available statewide. So we need to be able to offer alternatives for individuals who can be treated safely in the community in a less intensive placement than the emergency department. And when you think of the emergency department, the emergency department is really designed for individuals for physical health emergencies and not mental health emergencies. So I want to talk about our plans for this next upcoming year. It's really looking at, like I talked about, right now it is confusing, there's two points of access during the day, you can come to LifeWays, but in the evening and on the weekends, the ED is the only alternative for individuals. When you look at the fact that 1,300 individuals this past year could have been served in a less intensive setting than the emergency department, and you look at the cost of the emergency department and being able to divert those costs annually, that's about $3 million. We already know that it already puts an impact on an overloaded emergency department system within our community by having individuals with mental health needs showing up there who could be diverted. And it is a duplication of assessment. When we look at the fact that individuals show up, they have to go through two screenings. They go through a screening that occurs with the emergency department, and then they also have to go through another screening because it's a requirement of the mental health code that the community mental health uninsured and for those that are the Medicaid population that we screen them. So they go through two screenings, the amount of time that individuals in the ED, there is a better way to provide services. So what we are working to do, and we've been planning for, for our strategic plan actually for the last four years, is around the evolution of being able to play and provide 24 crisis services for all in the community. Millage dollars will help support that, but will not support, it won't cover the cost for Medicaid, so that is important to note, that Medicaid dollars will be able to be utilized to cover the cost for those that have that. But this is really about the uninsured, the underinsured in our community, so that everybody, you don't have to say, "Okay, I can only go to LifeWays if I have Medicaid or Health in Michigan." It has to be, no, it has to be open to all in the community. It will allow for 24/7 crisis response. There will be walk availability, it will allow the ability for the hospitals to be able to transfer individuals. We already have a mobile crisis team in which we can dispatch and pick the individual up from the emergency department and bring them to LifeWays for a level of care. We will have a continuum of crisis services at LifeWays. Right now, we already do have the mobile crisis. We do also have an intensive crisis stabilization service that we were approved for with the state a little over a year ago, and that's specifically for children. And it's a dispatch mobile team that will go wherever that individual is in the community. They will, they can be called to go to the school, to the home, provide the supports, and even ongoing supports, and connecting them with resources, especially if they've been, never accessed the mental health system before. It's a great community resource, and it's a statewide trend relative to really looking at how can we support our community. The other thing that the crisis unit will also be able to provide is a 23-hour observation. So if somebody doesn't need inpatient, but they just need a place to go to de-escalate the crisis, have counseling, have immediate assessment, and ongoing connection with services, that we will be able to provide that onsite 24/7. The other thing that we will be providing is a crisis residential unit onsite, and it is, allows for an individual to stay up to 14 days. And it will also, we are licensing it to also include the SUD population because that is also an unmet need within our community where individuals are showing up in the ED. So it will be both for the mentally ill population and the SUD population. And we're pretty excited about that. This is a national trend around, there's a lot of movement occurring right now at the state level with Governor Whitmer and her administration around, we have to do more to state to address mental health crisis throughout and have a continuum of services. And so this is an exciting opportunity for our community to do that, and we want to be able to use millage dollars this next year to support that effort. We also want to continue, obviously, with the services that we've been providing this past year with the millage. We do believe that there is enough funding to be able to expand and provide the crisis continuum as well as continuing to provide services for the uninsured, also continuing the supports for the schools that we've been providing, trauma services for youth, continuing the supports for the jails that we have here in Jackson, as well as looking at and supporting the ongoing program of Club Life, outstanding results there, and as well as supporting some of the guardianship services here in Jackson. So now I'll break down what the proposed budget for 2020 looks like. So when we look at this next year, we will be looking at providing, again, the ongoing mental health jail services, and here you can see where it broke out. Some of it has increased if you looked at the comparison of fiscal year 19 when I did my initial budget. Some of them did increase, and that's because of the utilization of those services. Some of them decreased slightly because of the utilization, and that would be an example of the mental health services for the uninsured and underinsured. And the other thing that we're also doing is providing, that we did not provide last year, was some supports to the department on aging relative to some mental health prevention screenings that they were doing that really does an outreach to individuals that are seniors that might need to be connected with mental health supports. And then the other thing that we are looking at doing in Jackson County, and we're quite excited about it, is the crisis intervention team training, and that is in partnership with law enforcement. And it is really looking at a national model for law enforcement being trained around how to interact and connect individuals in partnership with the community mental health for individuals that they come across in the community. We're excited about it because it does, there is an opportunity, you do a variety of models, if you will. Some communities across Michigan actually have mental health individuals right along with law enforcement when they know that they have a mental health crisis. Other ones, they don't partner that way, but they do have the mobile team meet them at site. We've had a couple of those happen this past year in partnership with the Jackson City Police, and it's been outstanding, so I guess I'm running on time? No, okay. So I do want to mention that it is exciting, we have both the city police as well as the Jackson County Sheriff's Department has agreed to partner with this type of model. And when I go into the last slide, the last slide kind of looks at, okay, what was our carryover from last year, our estimate for fiscal year 2020 relative to the millage, the total that we have budgeted for that I just showed you on the prior slide, and then what our, what the total is, and then what we're budgeting relative to expenditures. And another thing, just to keep in mind, that as I have done this past year, is I will, on a quarterly basis, provide updates about the utilization of the millage to the county. So now we leave it up to any questions of the county Commissioners.
So with the carryover of just under $600,000, forgive me because I didn't, I don't have the 2019 budget in front of me, where are we seeing the increases particularly going to in each department on this breakdown?
The increase is going towards the enrichment program.
Okay.
The guardianship. So I did increase the guardianship from $20,000 to $50,000.
Okay.
Because there's some concern about terminating some community mental health individuals, and so I wanted to cover the cost associated with those individuals. And then the increase is relative to the crisis services for the community.
Okay.
Oh, Tony, I'm sorry, over here. Sorry. Sorry, Tony.
I'm having difficulty following these numbers from one budget, what was proposed, what was used, what was proposed for this year, because they're different titles, they're different services. There's nothing, I think I'm gonna have to retype this stuff for myself because printing these things out at home, they just don't print out nicely onto a sheet, so I can't hold things next to each other and go line to line. So I'm having difficulty getting through this. I see that last year, mental health jail services, this year you're proposing $160,000. I gotta scroll all the way back. All right, where'd you go now? Come on, open up.
I have it up there on the...
That's why I'm having trouble getting through this.
Yeah, the reason, if you're asking about the reason for the decrease, was last year I included both the jail services and the CIT training for law enforcement, mental health law enforcement training. It did take some time to work with both the city and with the Jackson County Sheriff's Department to talk about how we wanted to move forward around the implementation of the training, and what they were agreeable around mental health training, so we did not provide that this past year. And in this year's budget, when you look at that last slide, you'll see that I broke it out specifically around CIT, so I took it out of the jail services line and moved it down to the crisis intervention training line.
Jail services and law enforcement training 2019 was a total of $210,000. God, I'm having trouble with this document. I can't read that. Well, I can't scroll between the pages I need. That's also the problem I have, is I can't print this and have things laid out so I can cross-reference them. Why is this not doing that? Oh, come on. This thing's backing up to nonsense. It's also, I'm trying to scroll quickly through this thing, it just jumps to a different application. All right, I'll look at RODs for a moment. Jail services and law enforcement for 2019, $210,000. Proposed budget, jail services and law enforcement training, proposed budget at 219, you only spent 89, or 98. There's a sub-note that says, "Note, expansion occurred July 2019. Enrichment Center, you had a budget of $300,000, you only spent 188." I'm looking at these things, and I'm trying to figure out, why do you need this much of a millage? You didn't use it before, you've got half a million left over, and so now going from having a budget of spending only 1.2 million, now you're saying next year you need 2.7. Where am I getting confused on these numbers? Can you guide me through this?
Yeah, well, I think the important thing that I tried to make the note of at the very beginning is that, one, this is a new venture, if you will, for community mental health to have a millage. We did project estimates about where we wanted to focus those efforts. Some of that took some time. Like I indicated, the enrichment center, I had to procure an RFP, we had to go through a process, we had individuals that are served be a part of the review of selection of an organization to provide those types of services. They did not... They did not even get up and going until April. And so it takes some time to ramp up services, if you will, for a program that's not existed before. And if you look at the utilization of some of those services, like also for the uninsured, you saw an increase over time. And that's because the word gets out that there are services available that were not available before. And so the other thing is that we do want to be able to provide services for crisis. So we do know that there is needs within our community around the emergency department, around the boarding, around not having alternatives for individuals other than the hospital, not having alternatives for law enforcement other than the hospital, kind of to his point about the fact that individuals, law enforcement will have to take them there and sit there, and then they end up being discharged and not actually getting admitted or going back to the jail. I mean, there is unmet needs in our community, and this does allow us an opportunity with this millage to be flexible and to evaluate it on an annual basis and say, what are their needs? And, you know, I wish I would have had a magic ball that would have showed me what I could have seen a year ago right now, but I didn't. And so what we did when we presented, we presented an initial budget, and I've been presenting on a quarterly basis about the use of those to this commission throughout the year.
Yes, I've been listening to those. What is the enrichment center?
So that's the services for individuals who have intellectual developmental disabilities. They are individuals who are usually 26 and older, who do not have the ability. So it's difficult to understand, and I can't answer the question, why Medicaid allows for individuals with mental health challenges to be able to have a social enrichment type of program, where you can have natural supports built, you can learn how to move around in your community and be able to gain employment skills. That's available on the Medicaid side for the mentally ill. When you're intellectually developmentally disabled and you age out of the school system at 26, there is not any services available for you. And one of the things I've heard from parents, when I became CEO eight years ago now, was that they are struggling with what to do with their disabled adults that have aged out of the school, and now they're sitting at home 98% of the time. And their parents, they're working, what, how can we do something as a community to meet an unmet need? And when we went and pursued the millage, this was one of the things that we had earmarked funding for. And they are doing phenomenal things, this Club Life program for this population.
All right, so when they're in school, up to age 26?
Yes.
They're provided services that teach them how to function in the community, how to apply for a job and get employment. And then once they're over 26, those services aren't provided to them anymore historically?
Not from a social enrichment Club Life, Club program like the mentally ill population, no, they do not. It's not available.
All right. I'm not sure how to ask this question politely. If they are provided those services through the schools, beyond high school age, up to age 26, they've been provided those services, and they didn't absorb the benefits of those services, they didn't, for 26 years, they didn't figure out how to function the community even though they were given these supports, somehow that system failed, and so now we gotta provide more money after they're 26?
I wouldn't say that the system failed. You're talking about individuals, some of them with some extreme disabilities. I would not say that the school system failed them. I would say that people need lifelong supports, not just till the age of 26 and then you're done.
Okay, I understand that principle. All right.
I'm gonna give you an example, Tony. I witnessed a young lady who no longer could go at age 26 years old to Lyle Torrent. She'd been going every morning from when she was four years old till she was 26. Her parents couldn't convince her that the bus was not going to pick her up anymore. Okay? She has a mental deficiency that puts her at that point. She would go out literally every morning and wait for the bus to come by the front of the house, rain, snow, sleet, better than any person I've ever seen who wanted to go somewhere, but had nowhere to go because she was done with, she had timed out, she'd aged out. Whereas, once we established this program, she's now attending and now understands mentally that she can get a small job and can get training and can understand. A lot of these people don't, it doesn't click in their minds until after they've done stuff for a really long time, over and over, to understand that they can't do stuff or that they can learn to do stuff. And it's being there when that switch clicks in their mind. And if it means at 29 or 30, then that's what life waste saying they're doing. They're working with these people after they've timed out for services from the ISD. Okay, there's a pot of money that takes care of them when they're this age, and now we've created an organization that's supposed to supplement and help take care of them and train them and make them part of the community, make them function in society at the level that we hope makes them happy and that they can be a positive provider to society. That's what this does. It's not that they've failed in the school system. It's that, when you're dealing with these young people, and when I say young, they could be 35 years old. I've worked with them my whole life, and they just, they need a spot, and all of a sudden it does, it just clicks. And Mary Beth can tell you that, individual stories right along that it happens to. And they need to be outreach and need, someone needs to be there, or they just sit in a chair at home. Okay, instead of even having the opportunity to become a functioning member of society. That's how important this program is.
And this is one of the ones that I'm like most proud of because I see what it's doing for these individuals. I mean, it's great that this community's been able to provide this.
Well, thank you, Chairman, for that explanation. That helps me. I have very, very limited understanding of this area of personal help. I'm just trying to read what's here, trying to look at the money that's here, and trying to balance things out. So thank you for that explanation. Right then, the other, back to one of these things, that 2019, you had $160,000 that went to the jails and to mental health training for officers. You didn't use all of it. Now the mental health jail services for 2020 are a standalone item, and I don't see the training of the officers in there.
It's on the bottom of that slide, up here, CIT training. That's the training for law enforcement.
Which slide are you on?
The second to the last slide.
Okay, where's the officer training?
The Crisis Intervention Team training, the very last item on this slide.
Okay, so your Crisis Intervention Team is the, your officers fall under that team?
Yes, that's correct.
Are they the total amount of that team, or are there other members on that Crisis Intervention Team?
There's gonna be five from the Jackson City Police, and there are three from Jackson, the sheriff's office.
Okay. All right, as I was saying, I'm having trouble following some of this because the terminology's not the same. And so it appears to me that some things that were provided before aren't gonna be provided now, but thank you for your explanation. Then the total, then the total financial commitment, if you had 584,000 left over last year that you didn't spend, and now you're asking for the millage to be the same dollar amount, the $2,130,000. If you didn't spend it all last year, you're planning on expanding services this year to expand, to spend $1 million more than you did last year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to know where the money's, make sure I'm understanding this properly. Thank you.
Yes.
Mary Beth, just got a couple of questions for you and a couple of comments. One is that we have a training consortium for police officers in our county, that it's a multi-county actually, to coordinate training for police officers. With the CIT you're talking about, that's just a specific number of officers from specific agencies. But if there's training overall for officers, I would encourage you to look to potentially offer training through the consortium. If it gets MCOS certified, then officers get credit for that training, and I think it'd be beneficial. I also look forward to the time when we don't necessarily have to take every person that we come across that may have mental issues to HFA to spend time there. And I think the more that we can do to decrease that, the better off everybody is. And lastly, back to that number I asked about again, I'm not being critical of the number, I just want to make sure I understand it. So on the third slide, those numbers add up to 302, I think, if I did my math right?
Yes, 302 individuals were served, yes.
So is that what would be considered to be unique users, or could it be some of the same people, because it's a month-by-month breakdown, if you know?
No, they're unique. So it's not like the same person coming back. We took it out, so it's unique, yes.
They're unique users.
Yeah, they could be, right.
Okay, thank you.
Darius?
Just a couple of quick questions. My first question, under the enrichment services?
Yes.
Are any of those donated at all? I know we have, I see that your notes here, from Jackson Symphony Orchestra, Painting Bowling, are any of those donated?
I mean, I would have to inquire of the Club Life program. They may be getting donations that they wouldn't be reporting to us, but I could inquire about that.
Okay.
Yes.
And then this, my next question may have already been explained to me in a previous presentation, I'm just not seeing the note on it, so I do apologize. But in the jail itself, are there any services there in-house at all?
Yes, so we, there is both, in both jails in Jackson, there is a full-time clinician onsite providing crisis intervention as well as outpatient therapy. And one of the things that we're also doing with the jail is working with them on a Medicaid assisted treatment program, but that's not part of the millage.
Okay.
But just knowing that we're looking at both the SUD piece and the mental health needs of the individuals in the jail.
Okay, now is this after the full-time clinician? Is this like an after-hours thing, or is this like a 24-hour?
Right now, it is only during its business hours during the day at this point in time, but they have the availability to access our 24/7 crisis. So they can request somebody to be dispatched from our on-call staff.
Okay.
But we don't have somebody there 24/7 at the jail.
Okay. And then my last question, we, are you presented on the various schools that were receiving the mental health services? And there were a couple of comments on the possibility of some additional schools being added to that list. Is there any way that we could have an update on the decision on that?
Yes, but let me, I would just like to provide some additional information around that, is that we've been reaching out to Jackson Public Schools. And so I think it's an ongoing dialogue and education relative to getting them to wanting to engage around the supports that we can provide. So we are doing that. We actually have an ad hoc committee of our board that's actually just focused specifically on children's services around how we might be able to move the needle on that.
Okay. What about the other schools, East Jackson, Vanderco that were mentioned? Do you have individuals that have been reaching out to those as well?
Yes.
Or has the recitation been there, I guess?
Yes, I have a specific staff person that that is their role, is to try to build those relationships, to engage them in ongoing mental health supports in the schools.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, if there's anything that I can do to help facilitate those conversations, I'd be more than happy to.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, that's all. I have nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Daniel?
Good morning again. Just a couple of questions. So the first question I had was kind of around the CIT training. I'm just curious if that is a per-person cost, or is that just an overall cost, that $16,000, is that an overall cost for the group, or is that a per-person cost?
It's actually covering, so they provided the information, and what I mean by that is the sheriff's office and the city police relative to, this training is a pretty in-depth, it's five days. And to provide the estimate of the cost for the backfill for those officers during that time for them to train, we would be covering the cost of the training ourselves, because we will also be sending staff. So it's really about the backfill, and that's the challenge with law enforcement, is how do you have an officer, especially one of the models around the ongoing that you referenced, Commissioner Alwell, is about mental health first aid for law enforcement? It's a long training, and the challenge is how do you backfill for officers that are off the road for eight hours? And this does allow us an opportunity to do that with the millage dollars. But that is what it's for. It's to backfill those eight officers, if you will.
Is there a plan to provide that training to additional officers? Is this gonna be like an ongoing training to try to get them all trained? Or is there something that could be created? Because I think, you know, I know a five-day training is a pretty lengthy training, but is there some type of smaller length of time training that we could do overall training for, for all of the officers?
Right, and that's what...
Is that a possibility through what Dave was talking about with MCOS?
And we're looking at, we're looking at several of them. So there is a statewide work group that I sit on that is around jail diversion supports. And there are a variety of models that you can implement depending on the county or local law enforcement's needs. It can range anywhere from a two-hour, a four-hour, eight-hour, or the CIT model. Now, that's the ideal model because that really is a partnership. It's not just giving them basic mental health 101, but it's a partnership with the community mental health about what do they do? And it's this team of identified law enforcement that go out when they know that they may be potentially encountering an individual that has a mental health challenge, and how do they do that in partnership with the community mental health? That's what the CIT is. And it really isn't cost-effective to actually train an entire department on that. It's really a designated group of people that you identify, but there is an opportunity to do some of the other trainings like mental health first aid, or some of the smaller modules of four- or two-hour trainings. And we're looking at that, and we're having discussions with law enforcement about how can we support you?
Okay, and then the additional, thank you for that. The additional question that I had, Mary Beth, was about the, the uninsured and underinsured. So last year, you said we went from zero in 18 to 300 and something. Last year, 19, we originally budgeted $600,000, came in at like $287, but for 2020, we only budgeted $240,000. Do you see that population of uninsured and underinsured growing or staying the same? And if it does grow, how do we compensate for that with having a smaller budget? Is there room for if that number exceeds that budget?
Absolutely, there's an ability for me to make the adjustment relative to if we're seeing more of the uninsured. Some of the services, you know, when I listed that slide that included services that are provided, some of them are the crisis services that I'm now shifting over to the crisis line.
Okay.
So that's why there's some of that decrease.
Okay, thank you.
Final round of questions, anything?
Yep.
Mary Beth, again, thank you for all your diligent work and reaching out to this population.
Thank you. Good day.
Item six, non-motorized Jackson County Plan. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners and other members. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, okay.
I'd like you to speak into the mic.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, didn't realize it made that much of a difference, I apologize. So I'm Tanya De Oliveira, I'm from the Region Two Planning Commission, and I am the project manager for this... manager for this, um, project. And I'm here to provide an update, um, where the project is at, um, at the pleasure of the commission. So, as you may recall, um, the Region Two Planning Commission is working with consultants called the Greenway Collaborative, uh, out of Ann Arbor. They happen to be bicycle and pedestrian, um, experts in terms of developing facilities and programming, uh, for communities. They've done it across the state of Michigan as well as, um, other Midwestern states. Uh, they've been doing it for more than 25 years. So, uh, who is helping us? We have a project steering committee who are roughly about 20 members. Um, they represent different agencies and constituents across Jackson County. And I'm saying Jackson County as a geography, because it also includes the city of Jackson. Um, and then we've also had a lot of public input along the way as well. So we've had a robust public input, um, not only opportunities, but feedback we've actually gotten from the community, and I'll talk a little bit about that. So the project is basically, uh, about, it'll take about a year long. It started last winter and it will wrap up, um, this winter. And it'll result in a plan for bicycle and pedestrian facilities. So that includes things like bike lanes, paved shoulders, trails, sidewalks, um, a network, um, for Jackson County, as well as programming elements for the, uh, for the county and the city, um, as well as villages and townships to consider as well. I will also say if anybody has any questions, feel free to, um, uh, let somebody know and I, and I will be happy to address them, or if you, uh, prefer to wait, that is fine for me as well. Oops. So I believe the last time this group, um, we have heard something about this project formally was right when we were beginning the spring round of public engagement. Um, that was quite a success. We went out to 10 communities across the county, and that would, um, be the consultants who led the, the, uh, public input. We had opportunities, there was, uh, 10 different meetings, they were about two hours each. Um, I think we had, um, a roughly, well, we had over 100 people participate in the public meetings. We also had an online engagement, so there's a project website. And over the course of the, um, the spring public engagement, there was a specific platform where people could participate. The map kind of in the bottom corner there with, um, looks like a bunch of little quotes. Uh, that was just a snapshot of what the public engagement port, or portion of the website looked like for our spring public engagement. Um, and then we also had, uh, at the public meetings, people come out and, um, tell us their ideas. In the spring, the consultants said, um, let's just go out and hear what people's thoughts were, kind of, you know, what are your ideas? Start with a blank slate. Essentially, we had a map, um, either of the county or the local communities, and say, "Just tell us your ideas." And people had a lot of positive feedback in terms of what they wanted to see in their communities, uh, for bicycle and pedestrian, um, projects. Then over the summer, the consultants took the public feedback they received in the spring, along with their homework they had done over the course of last winter, in terms of gathering information on, on Jackson that includes things like vulnerable co- uh, vulnerable populations, maybe don't have access to, uh, transportation, land use, um, environmental, uh, issues, uh, those kinds of pieces of information. And then they developed an actual network, a draft network, I should say. Then in the fall, um, the consultants went back out to the public, they had another 10 meetings, they had another, um, online, uh, engagement piece on the website, and they had asked the public, they did, uh, from what we heard from you guys in the spring, this is the network we developed, what are your thoughts? And, uh, the public, um, told the consultants whether they got right, what they got wrong, what they needed tweaking. And what I want to show you here, um, on this next screen, is just sort of a working document piece the consultants put together, um, after the fall public engagement. Um, okay. So, the, just to kind of help you orient what this map is showing you, just at a high level, the pieces of information that are red, so that's either the red lines or the, um, text in red boxes, that is what the public told the consultants that they would like to see as a priority, what they want done first. There's a lot of red on the map, uh, which is positive again, right? We've, we did a due diligence when we, um, advertised this. We put it on websites, we put it, uh, we asked newspapers to run some, um, ads. Um, I also believe there was some local, um, newspapers that did some stories on this. I also happen to know that, uh, the radio stations advertised this, as well as, um, WLNS out of Lansing happened just to cover that there's public meetings going on. So there's certainly a lot of opportunity for people to know about the project. So, car, sorry, getting back to the map, the blue, um, either the lines or the boxes in white, um, the blue shows what maybe people thought was less important or a lower priority. And then the information that was in black is just things that, um, people were saying that needed, uh, tweaking or updating, the consultants didn't get quite right. The numbers that you happen to see, they, uh, there's another document that corresponding, I think there's like over 100 comments about what these individual, like, lines or segments, what is actually happening? That's in a different document. And then all the background pieces of information are maybe the, the draft, uh, network that the consultants put together. And again, this is just a county map, there's one of these for every individual community, as well as the city of Jackson. Um, as you can see, there's a lot of work that the consultants did in terms of gathering the public input, making sense of it, and trying to boil it down to start creating something. So what's this, what's that to say is that what the consultants have been doing from the fall until now, is that they've been taking this information and they've been beginning to develop, um, a final draft network, as well as a final planning document to help kind of explain and provide a roadmap of what the, uh, county might consider implementing in terms of bicycle and pedestrian facilities for the next five, 10, and maybe even 20 years. So this is, um, a draft of what the regional county network looks like at this time. Um, this is just, again, just a draft. Um, let me just kind of walk you through what the different colors, um, show. So in red, what it shows is the, the trails essentially, the, the backbone or priority trails that would crisscross the, the county. Um, the next color is yellow or orange, um, and those are gravel roads. Um, again, the public has asked for gravel road trails specifically, would either designed or maintained for bicycle and pedestrian, um, travel, traffic, recreation, people to enjoy gravel road riding. It's an actual part of the bicycling community. And then the, um, the green line, sorry, I keep looking, because there's, this is not showing up the true color in the screen in front of me. The green line are showing where, um, perhaps Jackson County Department of Transportation could focus on, uh, maintaining paved shoulders specifically for the public who would like to either bike or walk, or needs to bike and walk, um, across the county. And then the very sort of light pink, it just happens to show where the Iron Bell and the Great Lakes to Lake Trail is. And if, just to diverge from this map for just a moment, um, for those that may not be aware of what the Iron Bell Trail is, this is a map. Um, this, there's two trails and they go from Ironwood, Michigan, up in the, um, Upper Peninsula, down to, um, Bell Isle down by Detroit. And they are ways for people to bike and walk across the entire state of Michigan. This trail isn't necessarily completely, um, um, installed yet or completed, however, this is the grand vision. You can kind of see where Jackson is. Um, and as you may know, there's actually a good portion of the trail in Jackson Dunn. And that's just to highlight and show that when we're talking about biking and walking and making investments in our community, we're not just thinking about the impacts for our community, but perhaps those that could be felt statewide from either a travel or economic development standpoint. So going back to this, so this is, uh, the draft county network that the consultants have, um, completed at this time. There's also one of these kind of, um, maps with more detailed information, sometimes as down, as detailed as to what kind of crosswalk should be happening in places like Springport, Parma, Grass Lake, um, Concord, um, the Brooklyn area, um, and, and those kinds of communities. And that information will be more forthcoming, the consultants have not completed all of those yet. Yes, or-
Yep, okay, just looking at the map.
Yes.
More down by the Brooklyn and Norville Township area, I see a couple that are like dots and, and the, and the line's not connected like it is in the rest of the county. Is that a misprint or is?
So my understanding of what that is showing is that perhaps instead of just recognizing that there are maybe some, um, land, um, owners who, um, either landowners or there's, uh, the, the, the geography, maybe there's like, you know, a big water, um, it's, a big water sort of, uh, impediment. Um, the, the connection, instead of it being like a nice trail, you know, following the red, you would have to go from a trail to a gravel road, back up to a trail. So you could actually follow it, even if it was like in black and white, it would make a connection, but it just doesn't maybe, it recognizes that perhaps there's some work to be done, that there wasn't a foregone conclusion. Um, you know, maybe some pub, um, some landowners came to the public meetings and said, "We're not really interested in having the trail in our backyard." And the consultants are recognizing and honoring that there's something to be, you know, said there about, you know, what people may or may not be interested in at this time. There's another question.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I think part of that, you see Cory, is what's called a spirit trail. It, it runs from what's the old railroad grade, which is that north-south line you see along 127, and then, uh, that's picked up with an actual trail on the west end of Clark Lake and heads down to Ocean Beach, rodeing around. And I think the rest of it is proposed, what they're talking about doing, uh, around Lake Columbia into Brooklyn, probably.
So what I can also clarify is that this is what a regional network would look like when there's all the money in the sky, everybody loves biking and walking, and kumbaya, you know, you know, wonderful, wonderful. What this doesn't recognize is what the, um, this map right here, though the plan does in and of itself, doesn't recognize what the existing, uh, bicycle and walking, you know, trail facilities are in the county versus those that are planned. So just kind of understand there's a nuance here in this picture that you're seeing. And of course, when we're talking about a perfect world, that's a world that would, doesn't necessarily exist, but how, um, we're trying to get a roadmap of how we could actually get there. If the community, all its members, um, you know, are interested in developing this over a number of years, um, 10s years if not decades. So what are the next steps? I just want to talk briefly about that. Um, so the next steps is, so this is February. By the end of March, we should have a completed planning document. So, um, over the next two months, we'll have actually opportunities for engagement for final review of the final draft plan. Um, what will, that will look like is that, um, before the final draft plan kind of comes out, um, the Jackson County Department of Transportation, um, as well as the city and county parks have asked for just to kind of look at the maps of the network preliminarily, so they can be comfortable, the staff can be comfortable with what is being proposed before it goes out, so that way they can entertain any questions that might come out. Um, after the, they've had just a preliminary chance to review the, the maps, the steering committee will then look at the, the project, uh, that means the maps of the network as well as the planning document, you know, let the consultants know what needs to be changed, um, or give them the thumbs up. Then there'll be an opportunity for, um, the plan and the final draft plan to go public. And that would be an opportunity for yourselves, as well as any members of the public, to review the plan and, um, you know, put any, in final last, uh, comments. This will be the third opportunity for public input, so I hope, um, just the idea that the public has had an ample opportunities for public input has been, um, you know, recognized through this planning process. And then, um, then the, the plan will be sort of done, the, the, the plan itself will be done at the end of March. However, then the real work gets down to being done, and that's the adoption process of the plan at the county level, at the city level, as well as the villages and townships. And once the plan is adopted, then, um, county and city, uh, departments can start, um, working towards implementing the recommendations of the plan and actually realizing, um, this planning process and having us have nice bikes, bike lanes, trails, and sidewalks in the community that were fully vetted through the public process. Um, and that will happen in like, I guess, in about the next six months to a year, roughly speaking, the approval and adoption process. So that's where the, the plan is now. Uh, just lastly, as I'll leave this side up, as I'm happy to take questions, here's the project website. A lot of the project documents that have been, uh, the, the presentations that have been given to the steering committee are available there, as well as a lot of the maps the consultants have put together, kind of as working documents along the way. They're ve- it's a very transparent website, so please feel free to visit that if anybody has any questions, and I'm, I'm happy to entertain any other questions at this time.
Tony?
Thanks for this, uh, presentation. Um, I was, I read all of the public comments that were on the map. Just because a public comment is made doesn't necessarily mean we have to incorporate it. Connection from trail to breweries, Iron Bark 127 Brewery. I guess I question how valid that is, do we want to link our bike paths, our walking paths to, uh, breweries? And how you decide which one, uh, or all of them? Going to connect them to breweries, going to connect them to bars in town? Funding to hire acquisition specialists to secure easements on abandoned rail corridors under private ownership. Yeah, some of these abandoned rail corridors, uh, logically would make some nice, uh, trails. But if they're under private ownership, you may not get the owners to agree to-
That's right, that's correct.
And I, I would never support private land conden- condon- condemnation-
Sure.
-to, uh, for a bike path or a walking path. Uh, I would never support that. And would you need to hire a specialist to do that? You don't have staff already that have those capabilities?
So these are just the reflection of what the public has said. This is not indicate that there's going to be action taken on it, it's more or less just comments. Let me just go back for those. Everybody can kind of see, I'm assuming you're reading from this map, is this correct? Okay, yeah, so this is just comments that were collected and, at the countywide level and for the consultants to digest and to take in consideration. Um, I will say that they have strongly agreed with your comment in terms of, you know, if there's a, a private landowner who's not comfortable, we're not interested in making, you know, in fighting that fight. Let's go around and try to figure out if there's a better way. If over through that process, can, um, a landowner has decided to change their mind and they want to join back in the conversation, you know, that's great. But the consultants would agree, and I think you would see in the recommendations that will be coming out in the final draft plan, wouldn't say, "Hey, let's just, you know, take a project and ram it through someone's backyard." You know, that's not an appropriate way to, to do this, plus it doesn't make good sense in terms of a long-term relationship and building trust between, um, you know, private landowner and the government. So absolutely, and I think the consultants here are just showing is that, you know, when people have come out to these essentially 20 public meetings, as well as the public online engagement, the record, what they're doing is they're writing this down to reflect what they've heard and just have the opportunity for the public to say, "Yes, you've, you've heard this." That's why along with public, um, public engagement, the consultants did their homework back last winter, and they've continued to use that in terms of understanding what are the, the barriers or, um, the opportunities related to what land use says, what are the opportunities and, um, barriers related to other, uh, planning processes like recreation planning, um, other populations? Just kind of understanding that there's more to this than just because one person says something, it's going to happen. However, what it is interesting to show is that if there's, um, a public comments that are kind of coming back again and again over the course of time that kind of keep bubbling up, um, and there's more than one comment, there's a number of comments about a particular topic, that's worth considering and maybe diving in further. And again, that's why we've asked the consultants to come on and board and to, to do this, we're not doing it ourselves here, you know, either the county, Region Two, or the city, we're asking consultants to do this. Because essentially, um, when the consultants have put together a final draft plan, we get to look at it and say, "Well, we appreciate this, but let's, let's change this or let's tweak it." So I would invite you, when there's, uh, when the opportunity comes out for the final draft plan to review it, to do that. And through that, I will, I believe I've sent out emails to the group here. If there's comments, please feel free to pass them back to me or directly to the consultant, and I can pass them on to the consultant as well. Thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Ready, Zoe?
Yes.
Adverse childhood experiences, DHS, Zoe Lyons, Director.
Can you call up my? Thank you. Good morning, thank you for having me back, and I apologize for not being here as scheduled in January. Um, I also appreciate the bike and walk information in between the two very heavy topics of mental health and, uh, childhood trauma. So certainly being out in the fresh air helps with, uh, dealing with some of our harder-to-handle topics. So, our adverse childhood experience, this is just sort of, um, a quick taste of what we are presenting around the community and around the state. When I say "we," uh, myself and Dr. Bob Powell from Family Service and Children's Aid are master trainers that were trained in, from the My ACE Initiative over two years ago. And we, um, have done over 70 presentations to over 4,000 people around adverse childhood experiences. So we're going to give you just a little bit of information about what they are, how they affect the world around us, and, um, and I'll share with you a little bit about who we've trained in, in the community here, and then answer any questions that you might have. Um, so the ACE study actually occurred in the mid-1990s, so we are actually coming up on 30 years since the ACE, original ACE study took place. It has been replicated, uh, many times with the same, um, information coming out of, uh, additional studies, so, um, it remains, um, accurate and, uh, good information today. It was the largest study of its kind at the time. It was the largest study of its kind at the time. Kaiser Permanente, if you think of Blue Cross and Blue Shield in Michigan, so Kaiser Permanente is the population that they used for the study. And the study was, a bunch of questions about potential different traumas were sent out to 46,000 participants. 17,000 returned the questionnaire, and so the ACE study is based on those 17,000 survey responses, and then additional information about those participants and their long-term health. It examines past abuse, family dysfunction, and then current health status to come up with, with the results of the ACE study. So the 10, the ACE questionnaire, and I did pass out handouts that look just like this little piece on the right here. The ACE questionnaire has 10 questions. The questions leave the person who answers the questions with an ACE score of 0 to 10, and they are around physical abuse, emotional abuse, and sexual abuse, alcohol or drug use in the home, an incarcerated household member, so whether someone spent time in jail or prison, someone who has mental health issues that is in your home when you were a child, a mother treated violently. So back in 1996, when they were doing this study, domestic violence was very focused on mothers. Domestic violence now, we know, we know men can be abused, we know that in same-sex relationships there can be domestic violence, but certainly there is something very specifically hurtful when a child watches their mother being harmed. Having parents who are separated or divorced, and then emotional or physical neglect are the 10 ACes. Again, I gave you this questionnaire so that you can take a look at it and get an idea of where you might fall, or people that you know and love might fall in terms of the ACE, of your ACE score. They do fall into household dysfunction and then abuse and neglect, so you can sort of separate them out five and five in that way. So of the 17,000 ACE study participants, 36% had zero ACes, which when you sort of look at that, you think, "Great, that's the largest number in terms of, anywhere from 0 to 10." But that also means that over 60% of our population have experienced ACes. And again, I want to remind you about the population of this study. So again, if you equate it to our Blue Cross and Blue Shield population in Michigan, what we know about the participants in the study is that the vast majority of them were white, middle-class, had some college education, and were employed. What we also know about how trauma is experienced in our world is that if you don't fall into those categories, you are likely to have experienced trauma at higher rates. So when you add in our people of color, our LGBTQ population, people who live in poverty, you start to see how our ACE numbers are likely higher than 60%, probably closer to 80, 85% in our population, and you can really start to see how that affects our community. In terms of ACE scores, you, they really look at 1, 2, 3, and then 4 or more. So long-term health outcomes from an ACE score of 4, 5, and 6, all the way up to 10, tend to be about the same, and they are not very good if you have an ACE score of 4 or more. This just gives you a sort of breakdown of how many in the population fell under each type of abuse or neglect, so I think that's self-explanatory, so I'll just move on in the impact of time. So these are some of the things that are results of high ACE scores in our population. So they can affect our behaviors, they can affect our addictions, such as drug use and alcoholism and smoking. They can cause us to miss work, so it can have an effect on our employment. And then it really can have a strong effect on our physical and mental health. So anything from severe obesity and diabetes, to stroke and heart disease, mental health issues, and suicide attempts.
Zoe?
Yes?
I believe...
Yeah.
Sorry. I had a question.
Okay.
I just got to go back one slide if we could.
Sure.
And I'm just curious, 20%, that's, boy, I never would have guessed that on sexual abuse, but what's the sample population? First of all, the number of people that participated, and are they just random people, or...
So they were, they were in the Kaiser Permanente healthcare system out of California back in the mid-1990s was the original population.
Oh, so this isn't relevant to Jackson County? This is a national thing?
It's a, it's a national study, and it, but I can tell you, in our work that we've done, it is very relevant to Jackson County, and in line with it.
I just meant...
The study was done in California. Correct. Okay. So here's what we know about ACE scores. The more, the more ACes that you have, the higher your risk for negative health and social outcomes. So those things that we talked about on this page, in terms of behavior and physical and mental health, the higher your ACE score, the more likely you are to suffer those outcomes. So in a dose-response relationship, as that goes up, so do your negative health outcomes. So they influence us over a lifetime as well. So obviously, adverse childhood experiences can start at birth. What we also know, the newest science actually in the last couple of years is related to epigenetics, and it tells us that actually trauma that we, that our predecessors, our parents and our grandparents have experienced, is passed down through us in our, through our DNA. So, so this starts to have an effect in, maybe, maybe I have not experienced something myself as a child, but if my mother or my father was abused or neglected and suffered at the hands of their own parents, I may still have some responses and some negative health outcomes as a result of that. So it actually becomes a intergenerational response as well. And it can really end up in early death. So people with high ACE scores, their life expectancy can be decreased by up to 20 years. And this shows how it affects our society. So there's that life expectancy on the left-hand side, at higher ACs, you decrease your life expectancy. On the right is the economic toll. So you can see that 3.9 billion in criminal justice costs, 4.4 billion in child welfare, which is in large part why I'm here, because as you know, I'm the Director at the Department of Health and Human Services, and we do child welfare. Special education costs, healthcare costs, and at the bottom, 83.5 billion in productivity loss. So that's our businesses. That's those folks who can't go to work because they're ill, they're, they have social issues that keep them from learning and being trained, and those are really high costs for our community as well. This is an example of a Washington classroom. Washington State is a little bit ahead of us in terms of ACE work in their communities, but what you can see in an average high school classroom is that only six students out of 30 had zero ACs. So it's really in line with what we're seeing in terms of the ACE score as well. And you had 10 students that had ACE scores of 4 or higher, just within one classroom. So when you think about how ACs affect our social and emotional functioning, and you think about what teachers are experiencing, when they have 10 students potentially in their classrooms that have high ACE scores, you can start to see how this affects our schools as well. So it's not all bad news. The reason that we are out here doing these presentations is that we want folks to know there are ways to build resilience to this trauma that children experience, and to create communities that help build up stronger children. And keep in mind, all of us used to be children. So we're not only talking about kids who are under 18 right now, we are actually talking about all of the adults in our communities that this affects as well. So it's, this is a problem for all of us. So these, we're going to talk about a few ways that we can really build things up. I will tell you, the number one thing that all of the experts across the world talk about in terms of balancing and having an effect on children who have experienced trauma is this middle bucket here, attachment and belonging. And it is my number one message to the people that I train everywhere and that I talk to on the streets, and that is, a strong, safe, caring adult in the life of a child can make all the difference in the world. It's also one of the reasons that we have really focused on educators, because teachers are with our children so often. But anyone in the community, whether you're a church member, a neighbor, a family member, anyone can be that strong, safe adult for a child and make a difference. The other thing under capability is teaching kids skills. We need to teach them self-regulation, so when they start feeling upset, we need to give them skills for how to settle themselves down, so that we're not constantly in an anger management situation. We need to teach them positive self-view and self-efficacy. And I just recently read an article that said chores are very good for children who have experienced ACs. It gives them this, something to do, you're teaching them a skill, and then when they do it successfully, you're teaching them self-efficacy. So it's a really great way to build resilience. And then on the right, community culture and spirituality. This is where, again, we come in as a community. We come together in our faith communities. In Jackson, we have a great Jackson Collaborative Network where folks are constantly coming together in the betterment of our community. And all of this work that we do as a community helps build up the community in a way that builds up our children and our families. Some very sort of concrete things that we can also do to help both adults and children who have experienced ACs is increase, so these are sort of resilience factors that make a difference. Increase feelings of hope, emotional support and hope. So any way that you can do that, by being a caring adult or a caring neighbor, are ways that cause people to sort of stand up, even though they've experienced trauma. Having two or more people who help, and this is concrete help, so we have lots of people, even in our own community, who if we said, "Who could you go to if you needed a gallon of milk?", they wouldn't have someone. Who would you go to if you had two children and one had to go to the emergency room because they had a high fever? Who would watch the other child? They wouldn't know. If we can help people make those connections, so that everyone has at least two people that they could go to, we are going to build up community and build up resilience to our traumas. Community reciprocity is watching out for each other. So when we build up our neighborhoods to watch out for kids in our neighborhoods, we are building community reciprocity. We sort of talk about, Bob and I, when we were kids, which was a while ago, you know, when the streetlights came on, you had to go home. If I did something naughty between my house and my friend's house down the street, my mom probably already knew by the time I got home, because they, you know, there were phone calls happening. Now there's sort of this stay back, don't get involved, and that doesn't help us as a community. And then social bridging is helping people reach outside their social circle for the help that they need. So I always, we always ask our classes, "Who knows about what 211 is?" You would be, you all know what 211 is? Okay. You would be surprised, really?
No.
Really? All right. Well, let's do it. 211 is the, the emergency service equivalent to 911. So if I have a medical or criminal justice emergency, I'm calling 911. If I need a doctor and I don't know where to go, or food or housing and I don't know where to go for it, I just can call 211, and they will help me navigate through what's available in our community to find something for me. And then I reach out and make those connections. So, so social bridging, helping people get the help they need, also builds up their abilities to resist the effects of trauma. Again, here, so you can sort of see what it, what it costs us. Abuse and neglect being five of those types of ACs, and then really the other five types of ACs also fall into the child welfare world. So non-fatal child maltreatment has an average lifetime cost of $210,000 per victim. And if you compare that to type 2 diabetes, which is actually less than that at $181,000, you can start to, again, see the cost to our community just in monetary costs, let alone the emotional costs. I put some resources on here for you in case you're interested in learning more. You can also pull up TED Talks, and there's all kinds of really simple information that you can get online around ACs. I will tell you that we offer free sessions for ACs in our community, because, we sign on the dotted line to do this free because we believe in it 100%. We do them once a month, and you can sign up through the nonprofit network. Those are all-day sessions. That's why I tell you, this is just a bite. We talk about how the brain is affected by trauma, we talk more about ACs, and we talk more about resilience. And then we also take time during that, those classes, and build strategies as a community. So how many times have you been to a training and it's really interesting while you're there, but then you leave and you go on your day, right? Your work? Yeah, that was great. We want people leaving that session with how it's going to be different the minute you walk out that door. And so we've spent a lot of time working with folks on individual strategies and strategies within their buildings as well. And then lastly, I will just let you know, sort of along the lines of the conversations with Mary Beth earlier, of those 70-plus trainings that we've done in the community, I'll let you know some of the places that we've done them. We have trained all of these school districts. Jackson Public Schools at all levels, elementary, middle school, and high school. Northwest Schools at all levels, although a very short version. Some of our Jackson Public Schools got all-day classes. Western Schools, Hanover, East Jackson, we went to East Jackson on Martin Luther King Day on my day off, and did a three-hour session for the teachers in East Jackson. DaVinci has been trained. Columbia, while they haven't necessarily gotten ACs, has gotten a lot of still trauma-informed training and a lot of work done out there. We've trained Jackson College, all of ABC Academy, so our daycare providers. All of Jackson Police Department were trained last June. And then we've trained businesses. So we've trained the Southeast Human Resource Group had us come in, Henry Ford Allegiance Health, and we're planning to go to Michigan Works and do Michigan Works both locally, and then we're also doing the statewide group of Michigan Works as well. So that's just a little bit about who we've done the training for so far, and, and again, our, our real goal is to get this out to everyone who can, who will listen.
Daniel?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, thank you for this great information. I just have one question. If you can provide to the administrator or chairman the schedule of available trainings, and then the link for us to be able to sign up if interested.
You bet. I will do that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Zoe, I thank you. I appreciate you coming here and doing this for us.
Thank you very much. I look forward to seeing you all in my classes.
Any other, any other items to come before the board? Seeing none. Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none. Commissioner comments? If you have questions from anything that was discussed today that comes up later on, please get with Deborah or Christopher, so we can share them with all commissioners when we receive the answers back. Please. We are adjourned.